Okay, we all set then, Maura?
We are.
We are, okay. Well, it's two minutes after seven, so we will start this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. First item of business is citizen comments. Do we have any citizens who are wishing to share any comments?
We do have one attendee who just joined us. I will give them a moment to use the raise raise hand feature to see if they'd like to comment. And I do not see a raise hand feature. Oh, there we go. Just one moment. I will promote you to panelists, and you will have three minutes for your comments. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
This is Stacy Valensuela, and I just wanted to thank you for adding the amendment to the 1877 code to include the low and very low affordable housing. We need it so much here in Kenmore, and with the pandemic, we're going to need it even more. So I wanted to say I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, anybody else? Maura lined up to to share any comments?
Nope, that is our only attendee at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Next item of business is approval of the minutes, and the first one up is the August 18, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes. So be happy to entertain a motion for that.
I move. We approve the meeting minutes for August 18, Planning Commission.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the August 18 meeting minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Maura, do you want to do a roll call again?
Sure. Commissioner Vanderland?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutzis?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Chair Orangeall?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulcair?
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Now, we have the September 15, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Same same process. Do we hear a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second it. Suzanne?
Okay, we have a motion and second for the September 15 meeting minutes. Any discussion on those meeting minutes? Hearing none. Maura, go ahead and take our take our vote again, please.
Commissioner Lutzis?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanderland?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Chair Orangeall?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulcair?
Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved for both those. Maura, I did have a question. In the in the four times I used to sign these meeting minutes, do you still need that signature of any kind or or not?
I believe we agreed that in these times, we are not in need of a physical signature.
Great. Okay, all good then. So the next agenda item is the is the staff memo. So invite Lori and Debbie to take the virtual floor and lead us away.
Well, I think tonight you were following up on the two scenarios that you selected from your last meeting, and there's some draft code language in your packet to review. And so tonight, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to further refine those scenarios and also address several policy questions which were outlined in the memo. So that's the purpose of tonight's agenda, and I'll turn it over to Lori, who can now step you through those changes and see if you have any questions on the code language that was drafted.
Hi. So, good evening. Debbie gave a good overview of the staff memo, but I wanted to just let you know that this is the beginning of the framework we talked about. This isn't the final version, because there are still some questions to be answered, but it does give you a place to start. And you made some decisions last time about the two process options that you were interested in, and also you determined that you wanted it to apply to low and very low income projects. And so Attachment 1 to your memo was the proposed code language, and as always, it's in underlined, strike-through format and highlighted. So the text that is not underlined or does not have a strike-through to it is pre-existing text. And so I've given you two different chapters from the zoning code. The first one is 1877, which is that's Attachment 1, and that is the Affordable Housing chapter. So that chapter includes a whole bunch of standards from different places in the city. So that's why, for example, you see the TOD information in there. You also see some changes that you all made to community business. But the the critical page for you to look at is actually the very last page of Attachment 1. It would be a new section, 1877060, and it's called Expedited Permit Processing. And this is the part of this chapter that sets out the two options that you were considering. So subsection A is the section that allows certain projects in commercial and multifamily zones to become a lower-level process. So instead of a type 2 process, it would become a type 1 process, more like a building permit, actually. And then it so it specifies those zones, those multifamily and commercial zones, and then it gives some exceptions to this rule. So as we talked about previously, for example, you can do a variance at a lower-level process or a conditional use. And and that is clarified in Attachment 2 in terms of Chapter 1925, which talks about what process things go through. And so I'm going to jump to that in a minute, but let me just talk about subsection B. So subsection B outlines the second scenario that you discussed, which is to say that a person who is doing a low-income or very low-income affordable housing project, and there are some we have to add some more sentences in here, but that kind of a project, you could ask for expedited review. And you would ask the staff on forms provided by the city, and if the staff had availability, then staff would take on an expedited review. If they did not have that ability because of other priorities or staffing issues, then you the option for a consultant working for the city to be hired at the applicant's expense to expedite the project is a possibility. So if you look at Attachment 2, as I mentioned, this is a different chapter in the zoning code. This is in a chapter that talks about permit processes, and the second page talks about land use decision types. And all this does is to say that type 1 permit, you can do a type 1 permit for an affordable housing project as described in, and then it refers you back to 1877. So and even as I'm looking at it right now, it needs to read 1877060A, since Scenario B was not supposed to be an expedited review process. Okay, so I will make a note to myself right now with my little red pen, which you can't see, even though that there needs to be an amendment there. So those are the code amendments that are drafted. So before we go on to talk about further policy issues to really flesh out these options, do you have questions about these or concerns?
Lori, I just had a question. When I look at the reference in the table that sends you back up to the other section, do we have enough in in that section that we could really understand what a affordable, the type of affordable housing project we're talking about is?
It would be in 1877, and that's what I meant by we still have to flesh out what kind of a project, how big a project, et cetera. And and that's why if we turn to 1877060A and add some standards in there, then those would be the types of affordable project, affordable housing projects that could go through the type 1 process.
And is that work you're going to be doing in the future, is adding that detail?
I'm going to be adding it in about five minutes when I hear from you all about what you want to add.
That helps. Just when I first first read, this just appears to be circular. So but
Right, right.
Our intention is to add some detail here. Thank you.
Exactly. Are there other questions?
Yeah, Lori, I just wanted to maybe clarify on the type 1 decisions. It says there are no no appeals and no notice. So is there any way that the public, generally speaking, even knows about this until the city manager makes, I guess, the administrative decision?
No, the only time that the public would be notified would be if there was a State Environmental Policy Act or a SEPA review. That's always the first step in projects of a certain size or type. Currently, multifamily projects that have 20 units or more have to have a SEPA review. And if there is SEPA required, then there is a public notice. There's still no administrative appeal. The appeal would have to go to court, but there would be a notice issued.
Right, okay. I'm sorry, one more time. Is 20 or more is the is the threshold for the SEPA?
Correct.
Analysis.
I should probably I'm not sure whether it's 20 and plus or less than 20, but I think it's 20 and plus.
So obviously, the larger ones would have that SEPA requirement and then would have some element of public knowledge beforehand.
Notice. Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Okay?
I have a question or two. Lori, in Section A, when we when you talk about adding adding some more text and context to this, is one of the things that you'll be including following our conversation, what we mean by projects containing, for example, if we specify a certain number of units or, okay?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. The other question I had, this was specific to Section B, the the very last sentence that says, in the event the city's staffing or other permit priorities do not allow, is that definitive enough for anyone reading this code? It seemed maybe it seems arbitrary, right? We don't talk about what that decision process or what that staffing, or maybe we don't have to, but if I was looking at this as a developer, I would think the city can completely control whether or not they can take this on. And maybe that's true, but whether or not they can take this on with their own staffing and resources, or do they have to make available the opportunity for the developer to provide, the applicant to provide a consultant? Do we need to be any more specific or definitive, or I don't know, somehow predictable when it comes to talking about staffing and resources?
I think it would be very difficult to do that, because there could be so many variables in how that determination would have to be made. It would be made by the Development Services Director, and and he would be making it based on looking at what his, you know, does he have someone out on maternity leave? Does he have someone who's long-term ill? Do we have 50 unexpected permits? You know, it just would be, I can't imagine how you would write that in. It's really
Sure. Well, maybe. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, I'm just gonna say it would be hard.
I understand that completely. Maybe the language could be changed a little bit rather than in the event, which makes it sound like there's some deterministic factor that a developer could look at. Maybe it's something like in if in the determination or the message, I guess, I'd wanted to land is at the at the discretion of the city, but maybe, you know, the words are a little bit more nuanced than that, you know? If at the if at the determination of the Office of Development, we can't support this with our own staffing, then blah, blah, blah. Just kind of shifting it from there's some threshold that we're not going to tell you about to we own, you know, we have the we own the process of deciding what we can and can't take on, but maybe just kind of being clear in that with language.
I I like that language, and if the rest, what I wrote down is if in if a deter maybe it would have to be if a determination is made by, and it would be, it would read the city manager, because always everything reads the city manager, even though he assigns someone to do that. So if a determination is made by the city manager that staffing or other permit priorities do not allow, um, I think that would be a good change if and the rest of the commission is okay with that change. I see one thumbs up, two thumbs up. Okay, critical mass. All right. Okay.
I had just, this is a curiosity more than anything we need to nail tonight, but we exclude all of these enumerations, 1 through 5. How 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 probable is it that a development project would be proposed that doesn't include one of those items? Is it more likely than not that they won't include one, or is it more likely that they would?
I think it would be unlikely for a conditional use permit, a shoreline permit, those two, and I think probably a short subdivision. Those three would be unlikely. I think it's possible that a zoning variance or a critical area exception, those are more likely to be requested than the others. Is that what you're asking?
It is. Yep. And the reason I'm asking that is is I feel like the reason we're doing this at all is right to extend the inventory of affordable housing, and I wanted to make sure we were operating in the realm of probability, right? That we weren't we weren't painting such a narrow, or to put it another way, we weren't painting such a broad set of exceptions that we would be dealing with 10 or 20 or 30% of the applications that come in. But I didn't get the sense from you that that's what we're talking about, that we're we're not necessarily looking at a minority of applications that would not be one of those exclusions.
Yeah, I will say, you know, we talked last time about the that projects that might want to waive standards. They might want to waive setbacks. They might want to increase density. And the avenue for doing that that we were discussing was the development agreement, and the commission voted, I think unanimously, that you did not want to go in that direction. So what that does, in essence, is limit projects that can go through an expedited process to only those that are not requesting a variance of standards. So that's why it's written this way.
I understand. I just, you know, ultimately, at the end of this process, I'd like to see us making affordable housing more accessible than less. So I wanted to make sure we weren't carving out too small a piece of the application process for ourselves with these exceptions. If there were any of them, if that was true, if we were if we were saying, you know, 80% of the applications that come across does have one of these exclusions, then I would say, are there any of these? We could kick off the list, but I guess I still don't have a sense that we're dealing with a minority of applications that would pass this test.
Yeah, I I do think that just because of the nature of these kinds of projects, there's a lot of often public funding involved. They have to reach a certain density. I don't want to say that a majority of projects would not be interested in having a zoning variance or maybe even a critical area exception. I don't want to make, I'm not trying to say that. I'm saying that this was written based on an understanding that I had that you all didn't want to allow variances of standards. If you are suggesting that that be revisited and that, in fact, a variance, this would be, other than a development agreement, you could say if someone wants a variance, they can still go through the type 1 process. If if the commission is interested in that, it could be written that way, and that would give them, an applicant, an opportunity to look at waiving some standards.
Sometimes variances could be for very, very minor code modifications, right? I mean, they're not always monumental, but the way this is written, I think even a a minor variance like, you know, a small adjustment and a setback might might kick somebody out of this process. I wouldn't want to go forward to the city council with code that a code proposal that is so narrow that we haven't really achieved our goal, which is to set up a situation where we encourage more affordable housing development. But again, I don't have enough data to to tell you if we should be limiting any of these exclusions or not. But if I was, you know, if I had information that zoning variances occur 85% of the time, then I would say, yeah, we should probably revisit at least that one, but not knowing that, it's hard to say.
Yeah, and I'm not sure. I think I can say, for example, that Spencer 68, which included affordable housing, they did have some variances, and that was accomplished through the development agreement process. But beyond that, the other affordable housing projects, I I'm just not sure. Copper Lantern was probably the other one prior to that. And do you know, Debbie, whether they requested variances?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
And beyond that, it's it's projects that were permitted, I think, before we were even incorporated. Here in Run and here in Landy.
Yeah, we don't, unfortunately, to Mike's point, we don't have a big pool of affordable housing applications to kind of make that determination. So there are very few applications. So really, this is more prospective, looking forward.
I think that's an important point. We're in a learning process here, and as we go forward, we may, we all have the opportunity to come back and adjust this, but we need to get some more experience, I think, under our belt before we try and fine tune it. At this point, we may be, we don't have evidence one way or the other, but we may be erring on the side of allowing overprotection for particularly the surrounding community or other neighbors with these with these 1 through 5. But that maybe that's where we need to be at a time when we just don't have enough information to make a finely tuned decision.
Yeah. Lori, I don't I don't mean to make work for anybody, but would it be possible, since we're going to be doing some more work on this section anyway, would it be possible, the one that I guess that really catches my eye is zoning variance, because I guess my very layman's understanding is that they're fairly common in the application process? Would it be possible to find out what kind of percentage, and it doesn't have to be, Debbie, to your point, I don't think it has to be strictly around affordable housing applications, but just maybe development applications in general, if we could maybe get a sense from Brian, what the percentage of total applications that include zoning variance requests are? And if it's a, you know, I'd say if it's a really big number, like 75%, 60%, you know, something well north of 50, then maybe we revisit whether we want to really include that one.
I'd be surprised if it was that high a number, because typically, if you are seeing a lot of variances for a similar kind of thing, that's a good indication you should be changing the code or reevaluating the code for a change.
That's a good point.
A variance is typically more of an exception, either based on the uniqueness of the property itself or the application or something like that. So it's more the exception rather than the rule.
So does the commission want me to get this number for variances? Would you be interested in that? I mean, I'm happy to do it. If the commission as a whole is not wanting to consider that eliminating zoning variance from this list, then I I'm not sure it's worth going forward to collect the data, but
Could we do a kind of a minimalist approach? Could you ask the development director for his opinion on how 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 much this would really impact the workload or impact the process? If there are any things on here that he thought would be a significant impediment?
I think that's a good approach, Mike. I was thinking the same. Yeah, rather than doing a kind of a formal
Yeah.
deep dive on data.
Data to get numbers on this.
Just getting a sanity sanity check, I think, from the development department, that we weren't being overly restrictive. That's really all I was hoping for.
Yeah, I'm happy to check. He did review these amendments, so he saw where he were headed. He didn't have any comments.
So do you think another way you could create this framework so that we aren't being overly protective is to circle back around to this once we start describing what the criteria are, like if it's a 20-unit, how much of a percentage of affordable housing, and then you'd go back around to this, you know, is it a type 1 or type 2? I realize that we're building a framework, but we might have to come back and change this if we start working with percentages and just think about, the goal is to hopefully see a developer come in and look at some of these properties. It's also hard, because we don't know what properties would be used. We have the general scheme of, you know, the comprehensive plan in the downtown area, but it's like, we don't really, I don't, in my own head, have, well, these 10 properties potentially could, this would be very useful to them to attract affordable housing. So I can see what we're doing. We're creating a framework. You have to start somewhere, but it's obvious we may come back around and look at those five items and decide might not want to do that.
All right, so any other comments about this language at this point? And if not, we'll go on to the policy questions that we would use to flesh it out. It's like, okay, all right. So in the memo, I backtracked a little bit, because I wanted to go back to the purpose of of this project, which was to allow flexible reuse of tax-exempt or publicly-owned sites through a special process to increase housing supply and enable more diverse forms of housing. If linked to providing some affordable housing, consider possible opportunities If linked to providing some affordable housing, consider possible opportunities at the park and ride. That was the strategy. There was nothing that said you have to, you know, the idea with the housing strategy plan was you would consider a strategy for Kenmore and decide whether it worked or not. But that just gives you the idea of what we were working with. And, and that leads us to the questions. And I can either, we can either talk through the questions or I can share my screen and put the questions up on the screen, whatever you prefer. If you all have your materials in front of you, I won't bother to do that. But if it would be helpful, I can put it up.
I have my materials.
Yeah, I have, I have mine too. But anybody not have the materials and want the screen or need the screen?
Sounds like you're all very well prepared.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So there are three basic policy questions about these two approaches. And the first one has to do with the number of units in the development that have to be affordable. And remember, you've already decided that it's only very low and low income affordable units to be eligible for the review process. And we have seen the gamut. For example, in the TOD, which the number of units had to be no more than ten percent. That's because we were looking at making something that would satisfy the market, something that we thought was financially feasible. On the other hand, if you really wanted to focus on affordable housing projects only, that number could be a hundred percent. And it's not a maximum. It's like, you can't even think about this process unless you are a hundred percent affordable. So with that, I am not sure where you want to fall out. You could say only a certain number of units have to be affordable. You know, if you're ten percent, you can go through a faster process.
Well, I'll throw my, my thoughts out there. Wait for them to be ripped apart, but it's what we do. I was thinking here that if you are already involved in a low income project, you're probably particularly in the areas where we're looking to direct these, you're already involved in some kind of an arrangement where you're getting additional density considerations in recognition of the low income you're doing. So I would think that at a minimum, we would to get the additional advantage of this expedited process, you ought to be offering up something in addition to what you've already got on the table. So you could reference that back to what was the density requirement that they've already agreed to, or they put on the table. It has to be some amount greater than that. Or it has to be a hundred percent. In between, I think that's the only way you would get it. You have to reference it back to something. And I think the, the density requirements or the low income related to the density requirements is probably the standard to start that discussion.
So Mike, was that the all or nothing approach?
No, I, I think my preference would be, and I'm not sure how complicated this, I'd look to Laurie and Debbie to comment on this. But if, for instance, to give an example, which may or may not be realistic, if a developer has already come in and said that they want to take advantage of an increased density incentive, and they were willing to put up X amount of low income housing to qualify for that, or that was what the rule required, that if they also, in addition to that, receiving that level of density, they wanted to have an expedited review, they would have to offer up an additional amount of lower income housing to access that, or would have to reach some threshold. And I think the threshold ought to be something like, let's say, they were required to do ten percent affordable housing in order to expedite this process, they'd have to be a twenty or higher. I just throw that out. Some kind of a parameter like that, that's a hard number that you can get to that ensures that we're not giving away additional value without getting any additional value back. Laurie, Debbie, is that something you can work with to to write something that would actually be executable?
Yeah, I, I think what I would have to do is go back. All of the affordable housing incentives and requirements are in chapter eighteen seventy-seven. And I don't think I would go back to those individual sections. What I might think about doing is if you wanted to go this route is in, in A, there would be another subsection that said for the TOD, you would need X number of units additional. For the CB zone, you would need for the DC zone. So I think I would probably specify it just in that chapter, just for clarity, rather than having to send somebody back to the individual zoning districts.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. What others, what, what are others thinking? Any other good ideas? Or a good idea?
No, I, I generally fall in that, you know, I think that range too. I was also trying to think about what, and I think you told us this before, Laurie, maybe you could refresh our memories on what the percentage was in the the newer developments, you know, across from City Hall, what, in terms of low income or affordable housing, isn't that kind of in the, in the range of what they were providing?
Yeah, Spencer sixty-eight had a specific requirement. I think it was twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
For Debbie tonight.
It is. That, that, that percentage went sort of went way back as a condition of purchase. So the twenty-five percent is probably the highest requirement in the city for that specific piece of property.
And built. So we won't face that again. In other zones, we've tended to go more toward, if you get this many extra units, you have to build this many affordable units. And so it's a little bit different. It's not a straight percentage. So I'd have to think through how to do that, but to increase the increment at which you could move to the expedited process.
Would it be too complicated or cumbersome to distinguish also between low income and very low income in terms of the percentages, like they had to be? You know, I, I don't know what the, what the number is. So we can perhaps get some assurance that there will be some of the, you know, very low income housing, or is this intended just to be for both? Are we sort of lumping together low income and very low income in this?
The way it's written, it lumps them together. You could think about a strategy that, that said, you know, you can do affordable housing, but if you do very low income housing, then you're eligible for the expedited process. So you could break it that way as well. I, I, I'm a little bit hesitant to go too far in lots of different subgroups, because I think it will be really confusing. But there could be some element of that, as long as we don't go too far.
Right, that's right. No, I certainly understand, you know, some, some level of simplicity and easy to understand. But if we are trying to, you know, promote low income housing at the, at the very low income level, if there was some way to incentivize that or otherwise, you know, make it a little more possible to, to develop.
How about if we did something like, if the developer agreed to something like fifty percent of the units, they were additional affordable housing units, they're going to offer up had, were within the low to very low income, that they would be eligible for the expedited process. So we don't ask them for an additional commitment, but we're asking them to have a proportion of the units that they build be geared toward the lower income bracket, and that would justify an expedited process.
Lower income or very low income, Mike? Are you distinguishing between the two?
We could talk about that, but I was thinking that whatever that percentage would be, would have to be encompassing that low and very lowest, the two lowest criteria. We could say that in total, you could use the total for that, or whatever people thought. But they come up to something like fifty percent of the affordable units that they're agreeing to build would have to be for these two low income, lowest income categories. And that way they have some flexibility in terms of the economics to be able to, to manage the project.
So rather than
Go ahead.
Just for my clarity. So what you're saying is move away from the direction that we just talked about, about requiring an additional increment of affordable housing and instead say you can build right to the zoning incentive or however you want to build it. But if you commit to fifty percent of your affordable units being lower, very low, then you're eligible for expedited. Is that what you're thinking, Mike?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
It's another way to get at a public benefit here. And it may be that in reality, you really couldn't build out a project with those additional units. But we may be more feasible to within the number of allowed units that they're, they're going to go for, for affordable housing, that they could be economic if they had, even if they added to a lower, a lower level. So either way, I mean, you, you've got two, you've got two approaches. One would give you more affordable housing units. One within the set parameters of the current incentive agreements, you would have a larger percentage of those units being of the lowest income category. I think those are the two, two choices, and I think two approaches of how you could get there.
Does the commission have a preference?
I guess I, I would like whatever is the simplest to figure out, so not complicated for builders or staff having to deal with it. At the same time, I would like also whatever encourages the most number of affordable units. So if that's the second option of, if you have fifty percent or more, then you get the expedited process, then I'm in favor of that. But I'm not sure I followed everything that Mike was saying.
Yeah, I, I think that he was not saying that fifty percent of your project had to be affordable units. I think what he was saying is you go through whatever process you go through to determine how many affordable units you're going to build. And then, once you've done that, of those, say that's ten units out of a fifty unit project, those ten units, if you make five of them for like very low income, then get the expedited process. But that doesn't mean that you would have to do twenty-five units of affordable housing in your fifty unit project.
And it probably wouldn't be economically feasible, I think, to add additional units of affordable housing unless you had a very large project. But if you had a smaller to intermediate sized project, having, tilting your development more toward your, your portable housing more toward the lower income may be economically feasible. So you, so it might be interesting to get some feedback from some experts on this about how this falls out. But I think those are our two choices. We can encourage more low, low income housing. Or do we want to incentivize a total number of additional affordable housing? Either one of those, I think you run up against some kind of a hard economic stop, which we may not be able to judge what that is without some more expert input.
Yeah, I think it's, it's possible that I could talk with Arch or they could steer me to some affordable housing developers who could weigh in on on this topic. And it sounds like there are sort of two alternatives that you're thinking about.
Yeah, and you know, at the risk of making this even more complicated, it could be that we could offer these as option A and option B. So the developer who was looking at a very large project, who may have more flexibility to offer more low income units, could go for one approach, whereas a developer maybe with a smaller sized property who doesn't have the flexibility to add additional units could agree to, to make those units that they are going to build, some larger percentage of those being the lowest income. But that would allow the developer to be able to make that economic calculation and make the determination about which approach they would take. But it gives them two doors to walk through to achieve the same thing. All, which will lead to something that's of more value to, to the community.
So I think unless I hear from other commissioners that you don't like either of these two approaches, it might be worth it for me to spend some time kind of thinking through some options and then trying to vet those either with Arch, who has much more expertise in, in sort of long-term housing development, or can steer me to somebody on the private side who does. Does that sound okay? Or are there other alternatives or options that you want to consider?
No, I think, I think that's really good, especially getting that both the private developer and the Arch perspective, Laurie, I think that would both be both be very, very useful.
I, I just have to say that, you know, we were looking at this as sort of streamlining a process. And we're saying it's expedited review, but the expedited review, the developer may actually have to pay for that expedited review. So on top of saying you now might have to pay for the expedited review because the city can't do it, you're now putting on this extra layers. Not only do you have to pay for the expedited review, you have to put in more levels of affordability or more units than you're actually planning on doing. So that was the thought that, that sort of went through my mind is that you know, you, you may be the, the development, why, why would I want to do that if I have to pay for it? And now I have to do this extra stuff and pay for it? I'm playing a bit of devil's advocate here, but I mean, I guess it's a good question to, to follow up with the development community.
Yeah. Debbie, I, I think those, those are good questions. And what it really kind of goes back to is one of our first fundamental questions is what is the real value of an expedited process to the development community? And if the answer to that is that we're pursuing this because it's perceived to be of great value, then why can't we capture some of that value for the community? If it has low value, then it may question, bring into question why we're trying to do this at all. Particularly if you're giving up something, the community is giving up something in its level of potential review and, and control over this type of development, so. But yeah, I think the key to this is finding out from the, from the development community, whether public or private, just, just what is their preference and why? Otherwise, I think we're just shooting in the dark here. We, you're right, Debbie, we could build all kinds of stuff in here and all kinds of hypotheticals. That makes me nervous. So we need to learn more here.
All right, I think I have my direction. The second question is related to the first, obviously. What size of project should be able to take advantage of the special review process? Is this any, any project that meets the standards we set out? Or do you want it only for big projects or only for little projects? Do you care?
I'm for all projects.
Yeah, that was my first question. Why, why would we limit it if we want to promote affordable housing? I mean, is there any, is there any, you know, you can argue, is there an argument for limiting it? I guess is my question.
Yeah. And I don't think that there's probably an argument for limiting it.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't see limiting it specifically because we've limited the areas of the city where this could be done to areas where I think it's not going to have a sensitivity on particularly the single family housing. So I, I'm fine with it in, in the areas that we've already designated. I don't see any reason to limit it.
I heard three yeses or thumbs up or comments. Is there a fourth?
I'll, I'll be a fourth on that. I think any amount of gain, no matter how big or small, is still an amount of gain is what we're trying to achieve here. So I don't think there should be any reason to limit it.
All right. So the third question has to do with housing for seniors and housing for those with disabilities. And we could touch And we touched on this last time. And, and the determination was that for scenario one, which is the change in type, that really it's only for low and very low. That you, and obviously seniors and those with disabilities could fall into those categories. But the idea is it's for low income. And then the, the second part of that, though, is that what about scenario two? Which is the one that you can ask for expedited review. And again, if determination is made that it's not possible for staff to do it, then a consultant working for the city could maybe be hired to do it at the applicant's expense. Do you want to allow that for projects for seniors and those with disabilities? Or do you want to stick with the low and very low income standard?
I like the idea of.
Go ahead, Mike.
I like the idea of sticking with the affordable housing issues. Not that the senior and disability housing is not an issue, but it doesn't seem like the, not we're trying to crack at the moment.
Agreed.
Did not the council indicate in, can you, can you clarify, Lori, what the council said about housing for people with disabilities? Didn't they express some?
So that there was one council member who said, if you're looking at issues related to senior housing, and you recall that came up because of the private request, and that was included in your packet, so you could see what the request was. But in the context of the discussion of, okay, we will have a discussion about whether senior housing should be considered the equivalent, basically, of low or very low-income housing. You should also do the same thing, have that same consideration for housing for the disabled. So they weren't saying do it. They were just saying if you're talking about seniors, you could also be talking about housing for the disabled.
Personally, I think that we should stick with the, the low and very low income. But if this comes up in front of the city council, we should specify that we're not against senior living projects or housing projects for the disabled. But in fact, you know, we might be encouraging more affordable options to them by asking or not asking, but steering developers to create low-income and very low-income housing projects for these two different groups, if that makes sense.
I think that's a great point.
I think I saw a number of head nods there, so we'll just stick with the low and very low only.
And in our joint meeting, Nathan can explain to the council why that is.
Yes.
Because he did just such a great job a moment ago, right?
I'd, I'd be happy to, thank you.
All right, well, so I have my charge. I'm going to go back and try to develop some options and get some feedback on those first, that first question. And then it's clear what direction you want to head for number two and number three. I had two more questions in the staff memo, and these came up as a result of me looking for a different state rules and regulations related to affordable housing as I was deciding how to, to write the amendments. And so numbers four and five in your memo are the two questions that I'm hoping we can tackle. They're, they're, they come directly from state law issues. And the first is that in 2019, I guess there was a state law that requires consideration of higher densities on properties owned by religious organizations. And I know you're going to ask me what a religious organization is. So the answer is that it is a federally protected practice of a recognized religious assembly, school, or institution that owns or controls real property. So anyway, so this law says that you have to consider higher densities, but the city is in the position to set the policy for that. And currently, we don't really have a mechanism to deal with a request if it should come to us. So if somebody came to us and said, I want to take advantage of this, we would say, hmm, we don't really have something that could tackle that. There may be something in some zones, but, but not generally. And so we were talking about different potential approaches. And of course, leads us back to the whole development agreement discussion. Another approach would be to consider requests like that a conditional use. And that's, that's why I included in one of your attachments, the conditional use criteria. I think staff feels that a development agreement would be a better approach, that there are, it's public hearing, the city council makes the decision. They still have to get whatever underlying permits they might need. But it just is a more flexible way to deal with what would probably be a pretty unique ask. And these projects that are eligible for this have to be 100% affordable. And there's one caveat, which is the state level of affordability is at 80% AMI. So that's higher than we typically, you know, we've been looking down at zero to 30 or 30 to 50, something like this. This is up to 80% AMI. But I'm interested in your perspective, since I sort of feel like we have to do something with this requirement.
Lori, I, I'm trying to understand what we're trying to, what our goal is here. Is it in scope for us to be considering a new affordable housing criteria? Or are we talking about criteria for access to an expedited review?
I think we're talking about probably criteria for an affordable housing project, a review process for an affordable housing project on a religious organization's property. And I, I'm bringing it forward just because that was part of that original strategy that we were supposed to talk about. It said, allow flexible reuse of tax-exempt or publicly-owned sites. So last time, we narrowed it down and said, really, we're talking about a process with no variance of standards. This state law is saying you have to consider a variance of density standards for this kind of a project. And, and we don't have any place to put it. And I, I would have brought it up earlier, but truly, I didn't, I mean, I didn't catch it until this iteration of the memo.
So basically, we have to, we have to, the city has to have a process, has to have some, some way to.
I, I mean, we could not have a process, but then if, if the request came, what would we do with it? You know, it's not a land use permit, a type of land use permit. It's not, it's not clear how we would address it. I suppose one way you could address it would be to say, well, if they were to come to the city and they want to say they want increased density, they should have to do a conference of plan amendment and a rezone. But I know that's not what the state had in mind. I think this, you know, the state was trying to expedite it for affordable housing.
Right. So you're thinking whatever we come up with for the affordable housing agenda item, we may be able to, I, I'm not saying you're suggesting we do this exactly, but that's an approach, right? That what, what will we decide for the affordable housing expedited process? Could it also apply to this new state law cap, captured?
Well, I, I'm thinking, no, it, it wouldn't be the same thing. It wouldn't be, this can become a type one process or, or we can, the staff will review it because really we're trying to stay away from waivers of development standards. Instead, what I'm suggesting is this may be a case where you want to revisit the development agreement idea. Or if you really don't like that, even though the city council is the one who ultimately makes the decision. I mean, that, that is kind of like almost the highest level of process we have. Or you could go back and say, no, a type two process with discussion. And, and we'd probably have to add a conditional use criteria about affordable housing. But you could do it through a type two process, which is again, the Development Services Director makes the decision, it's appealable to the hearing examiner, et cetera.
So why wouldn't extending the framework we have already discussed tonight work for this situation as well? In addition to low and very low-income housing development applications, extend it to also include increased density applications for properties owned by religious organizations?
And make that a type one?
Just do it, yeah, exactly what we're doing for, for affordable and low, for affordable housing, do exactly the same thing for, for religious organizations that want to increase density. What I'm assuming that they want to do is, is have increased density allowances above what the, the property is owned for.
Right, I, you could do that. I would caution that religious organization properties are often in single-family zones and that that has been an issue that you have raised in the past. If you wanted to make it a type one, again, CIPA might give a public notice, there would be no local appeal.
Do we have any indication this has ever happened? I mean.
Well, it was only done in 2019. The state law was passed in 2019. So it's only been in effect a little more than a year. We have never had a request for this.
Unless Mike and I start our own religious sect and decide to start building housing. I, I don't see this happening very quickly.
Well, now let's just think about that again. I have some trepidation here. It's the same one I've had from the beginning is why are we eliminating public notice and review and input? Can you remind me, Lori, on the development agreement? What is the public's opportunity to provide comment or input?
So a development agreement is a, is a structure that fits on top of the underlying permit. So if you were having a building permit, there wouldn't be any notice because of the underlying permit. But the development agreement itself requires at least one, and in some cases, two public hearings in front of the city council. And the noticing, I believe, is done the same way as it is for a land use permit. On the other hand, if you had a more restrictive kind of a permit, like a type two or a type three, something like that, then you would go through that process and the development agreement process would sit on top of it. So you might have a public hearing at one level and then have one or two in front of the city council. Development agreement is definitely a process that involves public comment. The opportunity for public comment.
Does either of the processes you mentioned require a greater number or more of the low-income housing? Because it sounded like with the development agreement, they weren't required to have the low and very low. Is that, was, did I hear that correctly?
The, the state law says that projects that are 80% AMI or lower can make this request.
Okay.
And, and the development agreement doesn't specify what the number would be. The development agreement is kind of a negotiated permit that allows, it allows flexibility. So you can look at density, you can look at all development standards, except like building code requirements and critical area requirements. And it goes to the city council. But it's, it's, it's pretty wide open, I would say, in terms of consideration. Staff makes a recommendation, of course, and it's supposed to be consistent with the conference of plan.
And also development agreement, whatever standards that you are waving through a development agreement, you have to also then provide some sort of equivalent public benefit as well.
Right. Mike, you're, you're muted.
The state rule that establishes the 80% criteria, is that a hard, all the units have to be 80%? Or could there be a mix there of low and, and higher value units, economically viable units to get to that 80%?
So it says, any city planning under this chapter must allow an increased density bonus consistent with local needs for, for any affordable housing development. And then affordable housing development, where does it talk about low income? The affordable housing development is set aside for or occupied exclusively by low-income households. And then low-income household is defined as less than 80% of the median family income.
Okay, so it doesn't say 80%, it says less than 80%.
Correct.
So it, it could be that we could set a criteria that would have low and very low. Doesn't have to be at 80%, it could be at the 30% level.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure about that. That's probably a city attorney kind of a question.
Well, that would be a question. I guess there's two questions there. One, can we, if, if it's less than 80%, can we apply our same low or very low criteria in this case? Or can it be a weighted average? So you had, let's say, 30% of that was at the very low income and you, you'd get up to the 80% by having higher value units in the rest of the project.
Okay. Is that a piece of information that?
Okay, we need.
Yeah, okay. All right, so do you feel like you need that information before you have further thoughts on this particular topic or?
It would be helpful for us to understand, to digest more clearly what the state law is, why it was written, is it to give higher density in areas merely because it's a nonprofit organization already recognized? And so city jurisdictions need to allow for that density. And there are some parameters in there, but I think we need to clarify what exactly does that mean?
Yeah, I, the other thing that I could send you a link to are the, they're called the Bill Digests for state law that talk about why something is being proposed and was being proposed. There may be some insights there, but I really think, you know, the fundamental reason was that religious organizations, and, and we've seen this in Kenmore, have sometimes a mandate that says affordable housing is something we should be focused on and we've got extra property, and so we want to do affordable housing. And they may run up against a density consideration. It doesn't mean the building would be any bigger, but it would hold more units. And so this state law says you have to consider that local jurisdiction. You can't just say no. You have to consider it in some way.
One additional legal question I'd like to have some more background on is the use of the term reuse of public or religious property. When we say reuse, what does that mean? Does that preclude one of these entities from acquiring property specifically for this purpose? Or does it contemplate, was the law contemplating that there's existing surplus property? For instance, as you referred to, Lori, that we could be repurposed for other purposes? I think you get into some perverse incentives if you get into the, away from what I think was the law's intent, which was to repurpose existing property, not to, to go out and purchase properties specifically for this purpose. which was to repurpose existing property, not to, to go out and purchase properties specifically for this purpose. Particularly if you've got an 80% income criteria on there. That might be problematic, particularly if it ends up being largely in a single family neighborhood. So just like to know if there's some, how do you interpret that? How do you use that reuse of property terminology?
Any other comments on this? Otherwise, I will try to get more information here that will help us better understand the state's intent. And it sounds like there's an interest maybe in moving forward with some kind of a process, but that the goal may be to focus more on the low and very low income housing. Is that, did I capture that?
Good.
All right, so the last question, number five here, this is not a work program item that you all would be taking on at this time. This is, this is another process question. This is actually a very significant process question. But it's one that requires, or would require quite a bit of background analysis. And there are notice requirements, et cetera. So this would be kind of a perspective from the Planning Commission on whether the city should consider this. It's almost like adding a strategy to the housing strategy plan. And that has to do with SEPA, State Environmental Policy Act review. So again, the state has sets out thresholds for different kinds of projects. And if you are over the threshold, you have to go through this review. And it looks at a whole bunch of different elements, they're called elements of the environment. You may all be familiar with it, but it looks at transportation and housing, utilities, critical areas, et cetera. And the threshold, as I mentioned earlier, is 20 multifamily units in Kenmore. And the state has now said that you could go up to 60 multifamily units if you meet these standards. And it says you can do kind of interim steps, et cetera, which would lead me maybe to conclude that you could talk about different kinds of multifamily projects. But if you don't, if you can't do that, and that's a question that would have to be asked, then it would mean any multifamily project that was 60 units or more would go through SEPA, and any multifamily project that's 60 units or less would not. So multifamily projects are allowed in our multifamily zones and in our commercial zones. So the question is whether it's, this would be a significant process improvement for these projects. Because SEPA is often time consuming, and it's another layer of review when in fact, maybe the underlying permit is already doing a lot of review. So I'm interested in your perspective on whether you think this is something the city should consider.
Hey Lori, do you happen to know the reasoning why the city chose 20 units as their kind of cap? And the state chose 60 as their cap?
24 years was the state cap. We never, this is something that's a state set, it's not us. But now they've said, okay, well, we know we want more housing development. And we know that a lot of jurisdictions have put rules in place that basically mirror all the issues we were concerned about. You know, the cities are looking at issues of critical areas. The cities are looking at issues of housing and putting rules and development regulations in place that address things that we were previously concerned about. So for those cities that can do an analysis and say, our regulations have it covered, we'll let you up the number.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was my, I mean, that was my first, I guess, obvious question is, you know, if you, if you do raise it, are you getting the same level of, you know, environmental impact review as you would with SEPA? So is that your, your general viewpoint? That the city already has enough safeguards in place to give the same level of environmental review as currently, if it was to be increased from 20?
I think for most issues, that would be the case. The one area, and Debbie may have a perspective on this, the one area where we might not be as strong and would need to develop some sort of a policy would relate to archaeological findings. We don't have a really robust historic preservation program, but they've, the state has totally written into this section, I think, knowing that some places don't, that you have to address historic preservation and archaeological findings. So I would say that is maybe a weak point in terms of our regulations. But I do have.
I think there are other sort of state regulations that you can't ignore the fact that if you had development and you were out there and you dug something up, there are, you, even if the city did not have any specific regulations, there are state regulations in place that you would have to comply with if you found some, something of archaeological significance during project development. Even if it, even if it was at the time where you're actually out there digging, if it hadn't, if you didn't know about it during the review, if you knew about it in advance, you would deal with it as part of the review process. If you didn't know about it and you found something during your building process, you would still have to declare it and deal with it at that point.
So that's great news, because really, this analysis, the SEPA analysis that's required is to say, show us that you have the regulations in place somewhere to deal with all these issues. So that's great. I didn't realize that.
Well, that's, that's interesting. I think I would definitely be in favor of eliminating duplicative rules here. So if we have, or we could have a side by side analysis that said, here is what SEPA is looking for, and here's what the city has in place that duplicates that or achieves that same goal. If we could go down and check off that list, item by item, then I would certainly have, I think we'd have confidence that, that we are doing a good job of this, and SEPA review would be duplicative. And it may be very high threshold types of projects where that, that there might be an increased sensitivity. And I could see increasing the threshold, but I'd like to see that analysis first. Sounds like we'd be required to do it anyway.
Right, right. And so do you feel that you need to, as a commission, see that analysis? Or do you want to just express that you may or may not be open to the idea? Because we'd have to do the analysis anyway before the council could, or the Planning Commission could take action on it, or we become a future docket item?
I'm certainly open to the idea.
Me as well.
Me too. With, with the caveat that, yeah, we need to see the analysis and the, you know, comparable environmental review. At least I believe that's.
Yeah, oh, totally. We would have to do it. It would be mandatory.
If this showed up on a future docket item, that would be my understanding, is someone would come to us with that analysis day one, and that's where the discussion starts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lori, can I ask why staff doesn't recommend we would extend this to, to single family residences as well?
The single family threshold is, I think, 30 units. Right, we could go up to 30 dwelling units. And we, we certainly could look at that, again, from comments I have heard previously. I, I assume that if there were, for example, a 20 unit subdivision going in, I don't even know that we have enough property to have a subdivision that big. But if it were going in, that there might be having an environmental review.
Well, there's going to be an environmental review, right? The question is, does it have to be duplicative? Does it have to be the Kenmore regulations as well as SEPA? And if that's what we're talking about for multifamily, I think, I don't know why we would limit it to multifamily. If, if, if what we have is, is good for that, I think it should satisfy both of these, but that's just my opinion.
Reactions from others?
I feel like this change potentially could have greater impact on future housing development than the affordable stuff we've been talking about tonight.
It's a pretty significant change.
And when you think about the land we have available, I mean, obviously, other cities have more space, we don't. But I still think it would be an advantage to open it up for the multifamily type of dwellings so that we could not have a developer have to do two sets of criteria, or would they? Would it just?
Yeah.
If it was under 20 currently, they don't have to. What the state is allowing is to bump that up to 60, is that correct? Yeah. So it could help some of the development, and especially the downtown area.
So I think maybe to Mike's point, that perhaps the idea could be that we want to look at SEPA thresholds. And then at, if that moves forward, then we can look at both of them so that every, we're informed on both sides, and then make a decision about whether single family and multifamily, just multifamily could be considered. Is that fair?
I agree with that approach.
I agree. I, I think we just need to keep in mind that there are some far reaching potential impacts here. And so in the 15 or 20 minutes we've had to talk about, this isn't enough to understand or discover all of those. So I think this would be a significant docket item. Just so we understand that it, it can't be done within, solely within the context of affordable family or it's going to have a citywide impact. We need to be able to spend some time and have the resources to do that in the right way.
And I, I'm sure Debbie is, is rolling her eyes, because we have a couple of really full years of dockets. So I don't know when this might come back to you, but I do think it's worth letting the council know that this is an opportunity to expedite.
Well, I think we'd have to figure out if we thought that making this change would have comprehensive plan amendments or, because that's how it would come back to the Planning Commission, or, or not.
Yeah. Right, right, exactly right.
Yeah.
But yeah, that also gets into what's our strategic planning, what's our zoning, you know, does it have any impact on that? I think, just off the top of my head, I think there's a lot of issues that this would touch on. I think it would be good work, but, you know, what, what are the city's priorities? Where does this fit in? That's something, that's something somebody else has to make. And in making that decision, they have to be ready to put up the resources to do this. And I could see some pretty significant consulting work would have to be done before, I think we'd have the confidence to come up with a recommendation.
Okay. Well, those were my questions for the evening. And Debbie, you can jump in here, but thinking about next meetings, what I am hoping is that we might be able to get pretty close to a preliminary recommendation at the next meeting. We'll see. If we don't, we don't, which would target your public hearing on this for probably the second meeting in November. But we'll just have to see where we are. Because I know I'm needing to bring back several pieces of information.
But then we'll, we'll just have to, to wait to assess that, because as you know, once you have the preliminary recommendation, then there are some other procedural things that we have to follow for amending regulations that we need to give ourselves time to do in addition to allowing time to have advanced notice for a public hearing. So I guess we'll just have to, to wait till, till the next meeting to see how close. And we could probably then tell you then, as soon as we could probably bring it back for a, a hearing to meet those requirements.
Okay, well, thanks, Lori. And Debbie, anything more for us tonight? From either of you? Okay, anybody else have anything else they want to bring up for, for the general good? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. We'll see you next time, everybody.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
A cute cat, Mike.